Welcome, everybody, to another episode of Commissioner Talk here on Sweet Home Catoosa. I'm your District 3 Commissioner, Richard Tharp. So, we're going to cover the last two meetings today. We're going to cover the meeting from February 18th and then March the 4th. We'll be having another meeting this coming week. Probably about the time this one hits out, we'll have the next one. And my intention is to get back to doing just one meeting per episode. But I was out with knee surgery. I'm fine. But things got kind of compacted here, so we'll go to two. So, as in last time, these two meetings, there was an important topic in each. One had a couple of important things, and that'll be the first meeting we'll go over. And then we had an important topic in the March 4th meeting that is still undecided, and we're hopefully going to get that decided here at the next meeting. That was actually the first, I think, split vote that we've had as a commission at the March 4th meeting that we'll talk about. You know, it's obviously, it's going to happen where, as a commission, we're going to disagree on things. We're going to see things differently, and that's fine. But my job, as your commissioner, is always try to do all the research I can to make the best decisions for you and for me and the county. And I look at it just like you do. I'm a taxpayer, too. If it doesn't make sense to me, I feel like it doesn't make sense to you. So, we'll jump right in here to the February 18th meeting. And so, we had a few good things here. The first item that came up was a fiscal matter, and it's called True Roll. And so, let's talk about this. True Roll was brought forward to us by our tax assessor. And so, Ashley O'Donnell came and he said, hey, I've got a software program that's been rolled out across the country, and it's had great success. And here's essentially what True Roll does for the citizens of Catoosa County. True Roll will take all the data that it collects, and it collects data from various sources and various places for everything, for all the properties here in Catoosa County. But more importantly, it collects data on who owns the properties. Now, it doesn't get into your credit report or get vital information that doesn't have access. It's all public information, but in a minute, you'll see why it's important. So, what True Roll does is it looks. And so, I'll give you an example because this one hit home for me. I have an aunt, and my aunt is now 80 years old. And we found out last year, my aunt has been paying her school tax portion of her property tax bill for the last five years. Now, she was exempt at age 75. She didn't know it. And if anybody knows in your property tax bill, your school portion is about three quarters of your bill. That's a lot of money. And so, she had no idea that she needed to go down and file for the exemption to get out of this school portion. So, that's what True Roll is going to do. True Roll will send her a notification. It knows her birth date. It knows these, that's the information I was talking about. So, it's going to send her a notification now and say, Ms. So-and-so, Mr. So-and-so, you are now eligible for an exemption. And this exemption is, and it'll list your exemption for you. And so, in her case, it would have said, hey, you're 75. You're now exempt from your property tax portion. That's your school portion of that bill. And so, she, it would inform her, you need to come down, you need to fill out, and apply, apply for this exemption. So, that's the first big piece of this. It's going to notify folks of exemptions that they may not know they're eligible for, and it'll give them the process they need to go through to come down and fill out for it to qualify for the exemption. So, I think that's huge for, for folks in the county. And here's the thing about it, too, because this was my thing. A lot of us get a lot of mail nowadays, and we get a lot of junk mail. So, when you get a lot of junk mail by nature, when you get things and they just look like junk, sometimes they're not junk, and you throw it away. True Roll won't just send out one notification one time. It'll come back and it'll say, hey, Ms. Jones hasn't come in and filed for this exemption yet. So, we're going to send out a second notification to Ms. Jones and make sure. It'll keep sending out these notifications periodically until Ms. Jones comes and files for that exemption. So, I think that's great. You know, you could take the low road, right? And say, hey, we sent out one notification. They didn't come in. I hate that form. And that's not what we're about, and that's not what Ashley wanted to be about at his office. So, kudos to him and his department. And so, that's one piece. So, then there's a second piece that I like, because I hear this all the time from folks. I'm sitting in the school lawn, and I look at all the tags picking up the kids in the parking lot. And now, you know right where I'm going, don't you? I see a lot of out-of-state tags, and they're picking up our kids in our schools. And so, you know, it could be a grandparent. It could be a valid reason that happens, and there are valid reasons. But then there's these suspicions that we all have, that folks may be using our school systems, but they really don't live here. Or, the one that really probably applies more times than not, is they've moved here from out of state, but they still have a residence, or some way they can keep that vehicle registered in that other state without registering it here. And you say, well, why would they want to do that? Well, if you've ever moved here from another state, and you go down there and you take your title and you want to apply for your tag here in Catoosa County, you had to pay an abhorrent tax. And that's not common in every state, but it is in Georgia. But it's a tax that gets collected, and that helps offset property taxes and other things. So, they don't want to pay the abhorrent tax. And so, they say, hey, you know, I moved here, and I used to live with my parents. My parents still live there. This is just one example. I'm going to leave my registration and my vehicle registered in that other state. I don't have to pay my abhorrent tax. So, let's go to the next example. As they moved here, and they bought a home, and they applied for a homestead exemption that they qualify for, but they still have their vehicle registered in another state. That's how they get their kids in the schools, right? Because their home is here. They live in Catoosa County. I mean, they are eligible to put their kids in school, but their vehicles aren't. True Roll will detect that. True Roll will detect that, hey, these folks, their vehicles are registered in another state, but they're filing for homestead exemption on the property they live in here. They don't qualify for that exemption if those vehicles aren't registered here. So, they won't be eligible for a homestead exemption in that. So, they'll get the exemption taken away. And at that point, they'll have to decide, do they want to go ahead and do the right thing and register their vehicles here, pay their abhorrent tax like everybody else does, or do they want to lose their homestead exemption? So, there's some policing mechanisms that go in here as well. So, there's a lot of great positives on the front end, like with my aunt, that paid for five years and didn't need to. And there's a lot of great things on the backside to try to equalize and make things even on the playing field. So, that's True Roll in a nutshell. So, you know, it's going to cost the county $28,000 a year for True Roll. But yes, we'll give away some exemptions, but the idea is, we should hopefully regain some folks here that aren't paying their fair share. That'll more than cover for this. So, my gut feeling is, it won't be an expense at the end of the day for the county, but True Roll is going to serve the citizens in letting folks know what exemptions they qualify for. And that's the most important piece of this. Folks need to get exemptions. Our elderly, especially like my aunt, who's on a fixed income, you know, those pennies counted. And you don't get a refund, unfortunately. You know, when she went down to file, they didn't say, hey, you paid for five years and you didn't need to. Here's a refund. Unfortunately, that's not the way the system works. So, thank you again for Ashley and his team bringing this forward. The implementation will come in pretty soon. I mean, we're already, this was the February 18th meeting, so these things are getting implemented as we speak today. And so, I'm proud of his team for bringing that forward. So, that was item up for number one there, almost like The Price is Right, right? The second item is a spare tire abatement reimbursement. So, Alex Wooton over there at the Public Works Department put together and said, hey, there's a way for us as a county to try to be better stewards of something. And there's a grant that we could take advantage of, and it's called the STAR Grant. And what the STAR Grant's going to do for us is, we get to have, Catoosa County get reimbursed up to $7,237 a year for scrap tire abatement. So, what's going to happen on this piece, twice a year, and the first one is going to be April 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at our Public Works facility. You can bring tires. So, some folks just have tires, for whatever reason. Maybe, you know, I don't know. A lot of folks, I can be honest with you, is they go out, they buy a car, they go online, they find another set of rims and tires, and they take and swap them out themselves, and they have that four tires laying around, or two tires, or a tire. There's a lot of different ways you end up with an extra tire laying around, but there's no way to dispose of those tires. You can't just take them to the landfill and throw them away, or throw them in a roll-off dumpster. But this event, and they're passenger tires only, so tractor tires unfortunately don't count in this program. I believe those 20 inches or over, the tire size, do not qualify. But if they're less than that, which is passenger vehicles, pretty much everything, and even a lot of truck tires qualify for this, you could take them down twice a year, and they'll announce these events. And it's up to 12 tires per household. You'll have to have proof of residency. And you could take these tires down there and dispose of them for free. So, that's a great thing. I think one of the commissioners, it was Chuck Harris, said, you know, every year, we have cleanup Catoosa. And so, when they start cleaning up in some of the rivers and streams, you find a lot of tires there, right? Because, you know, people throw them in there because they sink to the bottom, and nobody can see them, but they're there. And we want to have a way for citizens to be responsible. And so, Alex and his department found a grant through the state, so it won't cost us anything to be able to do this. And the second piece to that was, throughout the year, our Public Roads Department picks up tires along the side of the road or wherever. And they'll accumulate those tires, and we got an additional grant for $1,145 for us to be able to dispose of those tires annually as well. So, here again, it takes some of the burden off you, the taxpayers. And so, these are the kind of programs I like coming across at a county commission meeting. They're just problem-solving for the community, finding ways to not put the burden on the taxpayer. So, that ended up with our second items on there. And then that brings us to the next one. This next one is one of the bigger ones, especially for me being your District 3 Commissioner. And we partnered with a company called Trainfoe. Sorry. So, Trainfoe is a Canadian company. So, here's what Trainfoe is going to do. Anybody who lives in the Graysville area or crosses that tracks over at Graysville, and a lot of folks do in our county, coming back and forth to work every day. It's a very busy corridor, and the train has been a thorn in our sides for as long as that railroad crossing has been there. And so, for years, we have fought and said, and I live a mile from the tracks right here, so I deal with it often as well, that there's got to be a way. And the biggest problem we have is they block the track, right? There was what I call a double train, and there was one this morning. And this one was more of the faster-moving double trains. The one will come and stop waiting for the in- or outbound train to come. And there's times where that track can be blocked 10, 15 minutes, and that's a good day. But we've had excessive blockages over an hour, 45 minutes to an hour. And those are the ones that are crippling to us here in Catoosa County. And with the I-7524 corridor being worked on, and all the slowdowns you see on, and it's pretty much northbound, 75, a lot of times, Waze will take these folks off and bring them down 41, and direct them to kind of catch them back over, and catch an I-75 back over at the East Brainerd exit. Well, it's going to take them down Graysville Road over to East Brainerd Road. So, we get a lot of extra traffic when the interstate's backed up. Thankfully, Hamilton County, when they get that project finished, I think it'll help the traffic congestion. But back to our problem. We've been trying for years to get the trains to quit blocking the tracks. And there's been things thrown around back and forth about what can we do to the railroad to keep them from blocking the tracks as long as they do. And if you've ever sat there at the tracks and called that number, and I have, my wife and I have done this, they tell you point-blank, we were here before you. We were here before any of these houses were built. This railroad's been here for as long as we can remember. And so, you know what? Y'all came and built. Y'all congested this area. It's not our problem. We're going to run our system, or our business, the way we're going to run our business. Tough luck. And it's frustrating. So, here's what Trainfoe is going to do for us, twofold. The first part is, it's going to be a warning system for us. And so, there's multiple different ways this is going to happen. First of all, if you know where Graysville is, and the elementary school right there at Graysville, you have Wooton Road, Haggard Road, and Graysville all kind of converge at that elementary school point, where we're going to have a board go up there. It's going to be one of those lit-up boards, and it'll have messages on there when there's going to be a train event. And so, how do we know when a train event's coming? Well, Trainfoe puts sensors up and down the tracks, north and southbound. And what they do with that is, they can detect when the train's coming, obviously. And so, there was different levels. You know, there could have been, there was a basic level package, if you say. And they would only put one sensor, and that would just tell us, hey, there's a train coming. But it really wouldn't tell us how fast the train's going. And that doesn't do us any good. We needed to know if the train was slowing down, which we know means it's going to be an event where it's going to block the tracks. And so, we spin up to the next package where they put more sensors on either direction to catch the way the train is moving, at the speed it's moving. And we know based on the speed, if it's going to continue on through, or if it's slowing down. And so, that reader board's going to tell you, there's a train event, and it'll estimate a time, and it'll estimate how long the train will block the tracks. Now, you have an option, if you're coming off of Wooton onto Graysville, which is where a lot of folks come from, or from 41 down Graysville, you're going to have an option when you see that board. If it says "long train event," meaning there's going to be a blockage of the tracks for a long time. And they'll never be able to estimate how long that is, because we don't know how long the train's going to stop there. And we'll get back to that in a minute. So, you've got jumping off points. You can either, coming off of Wooton, you'll see it. You can make a decision to go back out toward 41 and go around. Or, if you're coming down Graysville, you can turn on Wooton and go back and go around different ways. The other board, to me, and I was glad I was in part of this process, it was already started when I came into office, and I recognized our previous commissioner, Vanita Hollander. She had, along with the county manager, saw what Hamilton County was doing, and they reached out to that same company to try to implement these things here in Catoosa County. So, thank you to them for starting the process. But there wasn't a board already in place on the original package, so to speak, on the Hamilton County side. And I said, you know, look, a lot of folks work here in Catoosa, go work in Hamilton, or live in Catoosa, go work in Hamilton. So, on their way home, once you're on Graysville Road, you're stuck. And you know what I mean, if you come down Graysville Road. The ditches are deep, and the road's not too wide. So, once you get down there and you get to the stopped traffic, you don't have a way to turn around. I said, so the board on that side needs to be on East Brainerd Road before you would turn onto Graysville Road if you were coming from I-75, where you would be working, and you come, and the traffic flow comes that way. I said, that board needs to be there before, because if I'm coming down East Brainerd Road, and I see that board, and it says "long train event," then I'm going to keep going straight. I'm going to go out to Udoall Ringgold Road, and I'm going to go around. And that's your best way to go around. Or, I'll turn back around, you know, I can get into the Walmart parking lot or some other way, turn around and go back towards 75. But once you're on Graysville Road, it's too late. So, we're partnering with Hamilton County. We're going to get the board put there. So, that second board was important to me, to make sure we had the traffic both ways that would have the proper notification. So, it's great. Look, we can tell you when there's a train event coming. We could tell you when there's a long train event coming, but it still doesn't fix the problem. And that's where we're all at. The problem we've always had with the railroad is, you got to have concrete numbers or evidence, as I like to say, to go back and say, hey, here's the blockages, and here's how long they are. And that's what comes in now. With these sensors in place, we will have hard statistical data to go back and say, here's how long you blocked the tracks. You can no longer now dispute, I was only there 10 minutes. We only blocked it for five minutes. We didn't block it that long. No, here's statistical proof that you blocked the tracks more than, because the regulations say they can't block it more than, and I believe, and I may be off on this, is 20 minutes. So, let's just say it is that 20 minutes. If we have evidence of how many times they block it over that tolerance, now we've got a pushback point to go back to them and maybe get into a litigation situation, or get our representatives on the national level to go and fight this train lobby that we just don't have any leverage against. We needed hard statistical data to be able to go and sit down and have the conversation that we need to have about how long they're blocking the track for. So, that's the best piece that comes with this on the back end, is sure, we get notified, but it doesn't change the situation. But the data will hopefully give us the ammunition to change the ultimate situation, which is keeping them in compliance on how long they can block the tracks. So, the upfront cost was $105,385. And that was covering all the implementation, the boards, the sensors, all of it to go in. Now, this will directly feed to our 911 centers. So, when there is a train event, 911 is instantly notified. So, if we have a fire event on the other side of the tracks, or need to get ambulance, or any kind of services there, they know before dispatch, there's a train over the tracks, and they can reach out to Hamilton County, or reach out to the other side over here to Ringgold, the dispatch. And so, we'll be able to get to these events, because that was always my complaint. What happens if there's a fire? Somebody's having a heart attack. Somebody needs emergency medical assistance, and the train's blocking the tracks and can't get to them. And I said, you know, what'll happen, like a lot of times, when the awareness gets put to this, and the attention gets put, because somebody's going to have to lose a life. And that's never where we want to be. So, now, 911 will have information from Trainfoe to know, hey, we need to dispatch accordingly to get to this event as quickly as possible. Waze, it implements with Waze. A lot of people use that app when they're traveling, or just on a daily basis, to know where the traffic patterns are and the ways around them. It implements with Waze, and implements with Google Maps. So, there's a lot of implementation through Trainfoe to get this information to you, not just the reader boards, but through apps. Then, the last piece, which is the piece that I really advocated for, is I want a text alert system. But our current text alert system that we have, that we're partnered with and under contract with, until May of this year, which is great, because now we can either upgrade and get it to really work for us for this train situation, or we can go somewhere else with another company. But here's what I would want as a citizen. I would want to get a text alert, just like these reader boards get of a train event. I wouldn't want to get to a road where I see the sign if I got that alert three or four minutes up the road on my phone, and I got a text notification saying, hey, there's a long train event at the track. And I would know ahead of time. And that's what I want. But I don't want a text alert at 3:00 in the morning, or 2:00 in the morning. I want them when I'm going to be using the tracks. And so, I want to be able to go into that text alert system for the train events and say, hey, I only want these alerts from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, or whatever timeframe that is that works for me. If I work third shift, I'd want them there. We want to be able to have this customized to work for the citizens, because we know from experience, if you just sign up for it, and you're getting text alerts at 3:00 in the morning, and it's waking you up, you're shutting it off. Now, it does you no good. So, that's going to be the next piece that I really advocated for, is we're going to get a text alert system that'll implement with this, with Trainfoe, that you can customize, and it works for you. And it's just one more way to get communication to everybody that uses that track location on a daily basis, that wants to get a little bit more heads-up on their phone notifications, instead of watching those two reader boards. And so, that's the last part of the system. So, that was probably one of the bigger things out of this meeting, and one of the things, obviously, for here, here in District 3, and for me as the District 3 Commissioner, that means something, because we need to put some teeth to getting this problem kind of mitigated. It'll never go away. Train's always going to be there. But having ways that make sense for the citizens who use this area constantly to not disrupt their lives so much. So, that was the next item in the meeting that happens. You know, they gave us information, obviously, you know, it's 37, average is 37 blockages a day at the tracks, and all these other things. But really, at the end of the day, what mattered the most was the fact that we needed to get this implemented, to get solutions, to get the problem fixed ultimately. So, next item up on this was our budget amendments. And, you know, those are pretty simple. You know, we had a fee disclosed. So, the Georgia Department of Revenue collects 911 fees on behalf of Catoosa County for the operation of our 911 center. And so, they remit these monthly fees to Catoosa County, and they're recorded in the 911 telephone fund. And so, over the reporting period, 911 fees to Georgia Emergency Communications Authority has created a new online portal for the viewing of these fees and reports. So, this is great, in the sense that we can monitor if our fees, if we've got 911 fees that are getting collected, and we say, hey, we didn't get our fees, we can log on and see where the disruption is. So, that was just the next thing our CFO brought forward to us. We just needed to sign a non-disclosure agreement to be able to opt into this system, or we could monitor our fees to make sure we're getting our money that's being collected from other entities that's due to Catoosa County citizens. So, a lot of those type things come through, and they're not as earth-shattering as, say, Trainfoe. But nevertheless, they're important to us, especially when it comes to revenue. And then, we had our general fund report. So, revenues were basically $10,993. To be on trend, they would have been, they were 25.58% of budget, and revenues needed to be 25%. So, essentially, at the end of the day, our revenues were up, and our expenditures were down. And that's what matters most to us, right? We're living within our means. When we did a budget last year, and I wasn't a part of that process, which I am very looking forward to the budgets this year, to where I get to have a say, and I get to look and dig into things. And that's one of the reasons I think I was put in office, too, so I could bring that business background in here, and really drill down, and try to find solutions to hopefully, you know, get us some relief in that kind of way. But for what they did last year, when they set the budgets, they said, hey, here's what they anticipated revenues will be. Here's what expenditures are that were approved. We're spending a little less, and we're getting a little more. So, everything's on track that way, which is good for the county. So, that brings us to the next thing, which is zoning cases. So, we had two zoning cases at this meeting, and both of them were pretty clear-cut. They were both real clear-cut. The first zoning case is a piece of property right off of Deets Road. And so, if you're on Cloud Springs, and you come on Deets Road, you know, there's a convenience store at the corner. And about the fourth piece down on that convenience store side, it's always looked like a car lot, essentially, is what it's been. But it's been zoned residential. So, the gentleman that was wanting to buy it, wanted to come in and get the zoning straightened out. You know, it's more of a commercial piece. And obviously, you pay less taxes with residential than you do commercial. So, who knows? You know, at the end of the day, he wanted to get the zoning right. It fit the zoning. The zoning made sense. It's really being used commercial anyway. So, as a board, we were like, absolutely, you know, this makes sense. Let's get this zoning corrected. So, he got granted his commercial zoning there. Great thing for the citizens of the county on that one is, hey, we'll now be collecting a little more tax on a piece of property, and we call that fair share, right? So, it only made sense. And then, the second piece was off of Highway 41, close to Pine Grove Access Road. Now, this was Chairman Henry, this was his piece to just, you know, here again, I'm big on transparency, right? He owns the piece right next door, and he has a triplex. So, there's a triplex here. He bought the house right next to it that adjoins it. And what he said was, is this is RTZ. There's actually an approved subdivision that backs up to it that's RTZ as well, that hasn't been developed and built yet, but it's already been approved by the commission prior. And he's like, I want to do the same thing with another triplex. Take the old house that's there, that's pretty old and disrepair, put another triplex there. So, the zoning met requirements. It's like-type. Now, Chairman Henry recused himself, left the room. So, you know, I appreciate that. I think that's always best in that case. And he knew that, and he definitely did the right thing there. And so, the zoning board had approved the motion 5 to 0. Same thing with the other one that came through. The zoning board had approved it 5 to 0. So, there was no opposition anywhere, because they were just the right types of things to do. So, we approved that from residential one to RTZ, so he could build the triplex there on that property as well. And with that, that was pretty much the meeting. That was the meeting. So, yeah, big things in that one, obviously, twofold. The train, but the biggest one, starting out with getting our True Roll implemented for the citizens, I think, is a big, big step. I think everybody, we all need tax relief, especially after last year. Anybody that pays property taxes, no. I'm not telling you a thing you don't already know. We had a huge increase. So, if you're eligible for an exemption, you want your exemption. But a lot of folks don't know they're eligible, and they don't know where to go get it. So, that's going to be cleaned up. And so, you know, between True Roll and the train and that meeting, those were a couple of great things. Everything else was cookie cutter, right on track, nothing out of the ordinary. So, that brought us to our March 4th meeting. And so, we'll start out on this one. This was great to see. Anybody who attended the meeting, we had all of our younger firefighters there that were in what we call our Explorer Program. And so, Chief Wallston brought them all in. He wanted to give them some kudos for training. So, real quick, what Explorer Program is, it's youth who aren't a member of our firefighters, and are not really Program is, it's youth who aren't a member of our firefighters and are not really necessarily, you call them volunteers yet. They're youth that aspire to be in our fire department one day. And so they meet and they do things to train and learn how to be potentially future firefighters. And it's a great program for our youth to get involved in when they're in high school. So they can say, hey, this is a career path I want to get into. They kind of know what they're doing and they get the training ahead of time. And so they had what they call Winterfest competition up in Pigeon Forge. And a couple of meetings back, you know, I talked about, chief came and made sure everybody knew, hey, there's going to be Catoosa County vehicles in Pigeon Forge because we're up there doing Winterfest with our youth through the Explorer Program. So somebody didn't think we're, somebody was using a county vehicle on personal time. So anyway, so they went up there, they had it and they came back and we just wanted to congratulate folks that did great. So in some of the competitions, here's what we had. In the Z-Drag competition, we had first place. Second place, we got in the Pittsburgh Drill. We got second place in the mystery event, Save Your Skin. And we got third place in basic knot tying. And we also got third place in rapid dress team event. And I think chief said, for them to put all their gear on, it only took 40 something seconds, which is kind of mind blowing to me because it takes me that long just to get out of bed in the morning. So, you know, of course, I'm 54 years old now, so I don't move quite the way I do, but used to. But kudos to the kids. Thank you. Thanks, chief, for putting the time into our youth to build the department from the bottom up. It's just a great thing. So that was the first thing we did and we took some photos with those kids. It's just great. Here again, it's a great day to be a commissioner when you get to do things like that. And it always makes me proud for what we have going on in the community. So the first, under fiscal matters, the first item we had, so Granicus. So I know most folks won't really know what Granicus is. Essentially this, let's just put it this way. A lot of folks in our community want to know more about what's going on in our community. And so they do what we call an open records request. And you could do that. You could say, hey, I want to know more about this that's going on in the county specifically. Can you pull an open records request and give me the information about that? And so right now, the way the system is set up, we get a lot of open records requests. And so as the county has grown over time and as the records requests have grown, and I know the sheriff's department, he talked about, I think he's gone from over 500 to over 1,000 records requests a year, which is astounding. But, you know, with his department, for instance, when this will be able to be implemented in his department as well, you get a lot of things, like if you have an accident scene and there's body cam footage. Well, obviously attorneys and things like that, they want access to that footage because they want to be able to see things. And with the county, there's things just like that, that people want to get to be able to review things to see what's going on. So she says, over the past five years, the volume of open records requests and management of the numerous county and regional boards and commissions has increased to a point where it's no longer possible to be managed and tracked manually. So that's where Granicus comes in. So what's going to happen now is when someone wants to fill out an open records request, once Granicus is up and running, you'll be able to log in there and it'll kind of direct you. It'll show you where to go. And a lot of things, we already store online. So instead of them having to send these off to certain departments and pull that, there's a lot of these things that are kept online where you can access it immediately and not have to wait. But more so for us, is it does twofold for us and for you, the citizen. For the citizen, when you fill it out and we get this uploaded and implemented, it'll, it'll say, hey, here you go. And you could fill out your request. Well, now you're in the system. If you can't access something that's already in there and there's something you want, now you're in there and there's a record of it. And it'll send you back notifications, letting you know the status of what's going on. You can log back in and see where in the system it's at. So if you send it in and it's got to be sent over to this department over here, it'll say, hey, you're, it was received. We've sent it to that department. That department's got it under review. So it tracks it. But more importantly for us on our side, and this is where our clerk, Melissa was talking about. Melissa Hannah said, listen, I get so many requests and I send them out and I disseminate them, all the departments and where they need to go. But a lot of times, let's just say that one department got it, for whatever reason, they got busy and they forgot. Well, if Melissa doesn't have a way to go back and if she misses that too, it might be the citizen coming back at a future date saying, hey, what's the status of my open records request? Well, that's never a good look for anybody. We don't ever want to drop the ball. You're wanting the information and we want to give it to you. You're entitled to it. You're a citizen, you're a taxpayer. So the system now, when it goes in and she sends it, it'll send back reminders to her. It sends reminders to that department, hey, you've got this. Where are you at? You know, it kind of gives you that nudge. And so, and then you, the citizen can track where it's at in the process. So we have to get to a point now, as large as we're getting, to be able to make sure we're efficient and that you're getting what you're entitled to as a taxpayer and a citizen, if you want to do an open records request, and this will do it. So it's going to cost us $30,000 a year. But what the argument goes back to on this is that we get so many records requests, that if you really look at it, the cost of the system pays for itself because we see a projected annual savings, and this was according to Granicus, of $68,584. And the reason they say that is, is because Catoosa County receives 20 to 25 requests a week, equating to 1,200 requests a year. And processing those is essential. So if we get that request now, and if it's something you can get online, it saved us time now because we don't have to have people go and pull those things and do it because it's already there. You can get it. And now we don't have any labor involved, is right? You can put it on there, ask for it, get it. Now we're not having people go and pull things. So they're saying that by having all of what we have and them having access to it, when you come in to do an open records request, you'll save time, we'll save money. And so that's a great marriage together. And so that was what Granicus was. Thank you, Melissa, for finding a solution to better serve the taxpayers. And it will say, even if it didn't save us a penny, it's going to make the process faster and more efficient for everybody involved, whether it's you sending in the records request, or for us as an entity, as a county government saying, hey, we want to get this back as fast as we can to you. So it's a big win both ways. So that was the first item up on the agenda. The second item was our coroner. He's needing a vehicle. So Jimmy Sparling, it's funny, Jimmy's like, I drive a Dodge Challenger. That was an old police car. It's got 150,000 miles on it. As coroner, he says, I can get to a call quick, but quick's not necessarily the best thing. And I thought that was pretty funny. He said, but here, here's the thing. We've got to transport bodies. And so what we found is there's departments out there that use vans. But you know, as well as I do, when you get a body sometimes, and this is the things that we don't like thinking about or talking about, but the body may not be in the best shape. And so if you have the body in a van and the person's driving up front, there's no barrier there. And so if there's odors or things that they're having to breathe and inhale while they're driving down the road, that's just not optimal. So what a lot of coroners offices are doing around the country is they're getting trucks. And so, you know, if you have a truck and then it's got a bed cover over the back, you know, we could transport those bodies and we're compartmentalized from the driver to the body. And it makes sense. So Jimmy said, hey, we had money in Sploes to get a vehicle for the coroner's office. And so he went out and found a used, it's a 2023 Chevrolet from the local Chevy dealer here, Ringgold. And he said, you know, it's got 11,631 miles. It's just a regular bed, cloth interior, no bells and whistles, a V8 engine, which he felt was important, 5.3 liter V8. And it's a long bed. And so it's $29,822 out the door. He had more than, than that in the budget, but this is just all that fits the needs. And it's got warranty still on it. The second option was a brand new truck, same truck, brand new Chevrolet from Paul Figpen. And problem with that is twofold. One, it was $35,043. So we would have been spending essentially $5,000 and a couple hundred dollars more, but it had been brand new. So, you know, 11,000 miles versus brand new. But it had a 2.7 cylinder, four cylinder turbo essentially is what Chevy now puts in those trucks. And he felt like, yeah, it may be more fuel efficient. But what we've been reading about, seeing about online and talking to our public works department is maintenance over the long haul for those probably won't be as good. And so Jimmy really dug in and checked things out and I appreciate that with him. And he wanted a truck that was really going to fit his needs long term. And that truck, truck fit the bill. He came in way under what he had budgeted. But he's still got to have money to put a topper over the back, which isn't going to be a whole lot, still be way within under budget. So anyway, it was no, no, nobody had a problem with that. We all want to help our coroner. Jimmy, thank you. You do a great job, you and your team for the county. You know, it's not a job that a lot of us like to think about, but it's a job that's definitely needed in the county. And thank you and your team for that. So we approved Jimmy's truck. So the next one up was Sheriff Gary Sisk. And in the Sploes referendum for 2024, there was allocated, so we've got $29,790 for rifle rated bulletproof vest shields. So what Sheriff Sisk says, obviously in the day and time we're in, they have bulletproof vests, but these are additional shields that go into the vest when they get to a situation where they feel that additional shielding is needed. And then also in there was for a ballistic shield that you see a lot of times in these big cities when they're throwing tear gas and all of that. Anyway, when you're in a bad situation, and so it was in the budget, it was already allocated in Sploes identified. And so we wanted to make sure we take care of our men and women who are taking care of us every day. And so we approved that one as well. And then that led us to Chief Walston. Now this one, since this meeting, has really kind of come forward. Chief came and said, listen, I need to have a way to fill our oxygen tanks on site. Right now, when we're out on the fire scene and we run out of oxygen, we've got to take those cylinders back to the station, the one station we have down in Ringgold and refill those and then get them back out to the men and women on the scene fighting these fires. Now listen, recording today, two days ago was when the fires broke out down in Rossville from the sparks from the train track. And we, in mutual aid, our county, we sent men and women over there to fight those fires with Walker County. Hamilton County did the same thing. Dade County, it was a mutual aid. There was hundreds and hundreds of acres and houses lost. So, you know, we've had major fire events here lately, period. There was probably two weeks prior to that, we had multiple fires going in the county in multiple places and they were big fires. And so chief said, listen, we've got a truck. We've already got the vehicle. We need to be able to outfit this where we can fill bottles on site. This truck can go to the sites where these fires are at. And as the bottles deplete, we can refill the bottles there on site and keep our men and women going and not have any lapse in time. And anybody that knows anything about fires, time is of the essence. Every minute is important. Every second is important. So here again, it was in the 2019 Sploes for equipment identified. He felt like this is something his department needed. And listen, you know, I don't think there's anybody in the community doesn't understand how important fighting fires are because we have had more than our fair share lately. I know we're going to have a big rain event this Saturday, then which is the big rain event. So it'll be next week when this comes out. So we'll have all done that. But, you know, when we're in a dry, low humid time like we are right now and fires are so easy to start, we need to be able to support our men and women on the front lines. And so we approved that one as well because it just made sense for us and for me. Which led us into the next one, which is great. So at the beginning, we talked about our explorers. And for these explorers, we want to outfit these guys, men and women with uniforms. But here's a great inventive way that chief found to do this. So under the NAFCO Equipment Grant Program for the state of Georgia, they award various departments with new, yet expired gear to support youth centered groups involved in emergency services. So what chief said is like, listen, there's gear and gear goes out of date. He said, but we've got gear throughout another department over in Alabama, I believe what chief said, that they had gear and it was out of date, but it was brand new. And he's like, we through this grant could get this gear. We can't use it on the front lines with our active firefighters because it's out of date. But these youth that are learning how to be firefighters in our Explorer Program can get brand new gear, no cost to the county, to train in. And I thought, that is such a phenomenal idea. So thank you, Chief Walston, for finding this and getting brand new uniforms and gear for these explorers in our program to be able to, you know, actively work in good uniforms to learn how to fight fires for us. So that was just a great thing. So obviously there was no money spent for the county. It was not a nickel through the grant program. And they've got brand new uniforms for our Explorer Program. So that was a great thing going there. So that brings us to probably what was the biggest topic of this last meeting on March the 4. And so let me walk everybody through this. So when 911 used to be located in our courthouse, that the 911 center was in the courthouse, it was in the back entrance of the courthouse when you went in and it was off to the right. Well, relocated. When we built the College and Career Academy, and I say we, we didn't, but when the, when the school system built that, when we partnered and we gave the land, we, the county decided that 911, we get a brand new 911 center there. And so it's on the campus of the College and Career Academy. So that's where 911 is located today. And that transition's pretty much complete. There's a few things left, but it's pretty much complete. They have been up and running over there for a while now, but it left a vacated space in the courthouse. Well, for me, it, and the rest of the commissioners, there was discussion and there had been discussion before I came on the commission, of what was that space best utilized for? Well, one of the ideas was to add a fifth courtroom to the courthouse. Now, we have five courtroom, or four courtrooms currently in the courthouse. Two of those courtrooms, courtroom A and B, if you've ever been to the courthouse, you come in and go upstairs, the first courtroom there to your left, which is the big courtroom, is courtroom A. And that's where you can have a jury trial. And that's our biggest courtroom. If you go down the hall from there to the right, there's courtroom B. And it also, it's a smaller courtroom, but it has a jury box as well. Those are our two jury courtrooms, courtroom A and B. And downstairs, we have courtroom C and D. And those are not able to be used for jury cases. But those are the ones you go in and you, you know, if you're getting a divorce or whatever, these other hearings that don't require juries to go through and do. So we've got four courtrooms. And so one of the proposals that was made prior to coming on the commission, and they paid an architect to go in there, do it, was to take the 911 space and make it a fifth courtroom and make it a jury courtroom. And some of the logic behind it was, one, it'll be on the main floor because currently the elevator in the courthouse is out of order. It's an old courthouse and the elevator's out of order. And a couple of meetings back, we approved to fix the cylinders that make it go, you know, up and down essentially to get that done. And we're probably halfway through that process now of getting that elevator fixed. So, you know, the, the argument is, is listen, if we have a jury courtroom on the first floor, when we sequester jurors and we've got somebody that we sequester that's not able to use the stairs and our elevator's broke, we can still sequester that juror because they're able to go to a first floor courtroom. Okay, I can understand that logic a little bit. I see the point. So for me, I needed to dig in a little bit because the cost of the courtroom is probably anywhere from 300 to 500,000 dollars to go in and outfit a new courtroom at the courthouse. So I talked to a lot of folks as a commissioner that I thought really had a handle on how much activity goes on in our courtroom every day. And then one day I was driving by and I saw a Catoosa County Sheriff's car sitting outside. And luckily, I haven't been exposed to a lot of court in my time. It dawned on me that typically, every time I see a judge in a courtroom, there's a sheriff's officer sitting in there too, right? Anybody's ever been to court, there's at least one officer in the courtroom. And I thought, you know, I wonder if they keep a record of when the officers are there at the courthouse in the courtroom. So I reached out and asked, and sure enough, there was a report that I could get that showed me how much of every month, how many hours, so if there's 160 hours a month that's available to use a courtroom, Monday through Friday, you know, eight to five without lunch, 160 hours, how many hours a month is every courtroom being used based on how often an officer's in there? And it broke it down by the month for me. And what I found was, there was only two months a year where courtrooms where courtrooms A and B were used 50% of the available hours with an officer in there. Courtroom C and D, D was only probably used less than 10% of the available hours a month. There's just not a lot of court that happens there. The two busiest months in Katusa County are March, right now, and September. Because our superior court judges, they run what we call Circuit. And so they run Dade, Chautauqua, Walker, and Katusa Counties. And so two months out of every year, they hold court in those counties. The superior judges come in and they hold as much court as they can during that time. So, you know, those are jury months. And so courtrooms A and B are vital to those judges being able to hear as many cases as they can. But when I looked at the report with the hours, I'm like, well, we're only using, at most, in the peak months, half the available hours. So I'm like, well, why do we need a fifth courtroom? So let's throw the next piece of this in. We have currently two agencies that we pay rent to put them in. Because we didn't have a place within a government building that we owned as a county to put them in currently. And that's our public defender and the coroner. We pay to put them at Rimco, which is over there by the Cracker Barrel for anybody that know in Ringgold, Rimco Industrial Park over there. We rent space over there, and we rent space for both those agencies and pay $2,087.10 a month to pay rent to have them there. And so my theory was, why can't we put those two people, public defender, which made sense to me, right? I mean, you know, they, they deal with the court, they'd be in the courthouse, and our coroner, who doesn't need a lot of space, in this 911 space? And there is space to do that. There's plenty of space to do that. They wouldn't be crammed in there at all. We saved $2,087 a month. The fit, the build out for those two agencies, based off what's in there now, we'd need new flooring, and we'd put up a few divider walls and some doors, it'd probably be less than $30,000 to relocate both of those people there, both those agencies. So here's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at, we're going to spend a half a million dollars to build a fifth courtroom, in my opinion, that we've got the space. And see, here's the thing for me, is, you know, the other side was like, you know, we need another courtroom. And I'm like, well, it doesn't show that. And they're like, well, there's times when we do hold court and there's not an officer in the courtroom. I said, okay, great. Can you get me that information? Can you give me that hard information like I got here on this report from the Sheriff's Department showing that? If you could get me that information, that helps me make a better decision. I don't have that information. And I'm not trying to say one way or the other why I don't have it. I'm just saying, the information I do have that's solid, that I can go off of, says, hey, we're not maximizing the usage of the four courtrooms we have. I can't look at a taxpayer and say, but I spent a half a million dollars potentially to build this other courtroom that's probably going to sit at least 50% or less empty available hours usage a month. How can I look at you and tell you that? I can't justify that. And so I can't go along for that. I, I think the better use of the space is to take these people that we're paying rent for, put them in there, let's quit paying rent, let's get out of the rental business, let's save taxpayers' money, let's save taxpayers' money by not doing that. Now, listen, the argument says, hey, we're a growing county. We're eventually going to need another courtroom. You know what? I don't disagree with that. But when that comes down the road many years from now, based off the usage we're at right now, then we can always look about relocating people and maybe making that a courtroom. There's options there. But today, today, I don't see that need to justify the expense. And that's just the way I view this. This was the first split vote as a commission. Not everybody, listen, I, I just try to get information, facts, not opinions, to make the best educated guess that I can for you, the taxpayers, is why you put me in there. It may not be popular with certain folks, but, you know, I, I got put in office, I felt like, because I told you, I'm a business guy. It's about dollars and cents, and that's how I'm going to govern. And this is one of these things, right out of the gate. For you, the taxpayer, I can't look in the eye and tell you I'm going to spend up to a half a million dollars, maybe more, to put a courtroom in there when I've got a better use of that space right now. So that's kind of where I'm at on that. So here's how the vote went. Chairman Henry and I said, this is what we feels best. Charlie Stevens said, Commissioner in District Four said, look, you know, we had a judge in here today telling us that there's potentially more evidence that he can present more than what we have now to maybe show where that fifth courtroom is needed. And really, I want to give that opportunity to have that evidence, so to speak, come forward and let me see that. And I didn't, you know, that's okay. I'm fine with that. He said, so I want to put it off two weeks till the next meeting and give time for that to come forward. And if I get that, and same thing with me, if I get that, that's great, then I'll vet that evidence. You know, like everything, I want to make sure what I'm looking at is, is factual, and I want to check sources and things like that. Because, you know, I want to make sure I'm making the best decision for you, the taxpayer. Commissioner in District Two, Chuck Harris, he just, you know, his rebuttal essentially was, look, it's a courthouse. Courthouse should have courtrooms and not office building. It's not an office building. I'd really, you know, I, I think the need that the folks at the courthouse are saying they need, I want to believe them, they're subject matter experts. And so, you know, he's kind of saying that he, you know, he felt like it needed to be a courtroom. I don't, listen, everybody makes up their mind based off the information they get. There was a meeting, I will say this, there was a meeting over at the courthouse last year before I took office, that they had all the folks in there that dealt with the courthouse every day, judges and everybody all involved. And in that room, they were talking about the need for that fifth courtroom. Problem was that that report that I uncovered about how much is being used wasn't available at that time. Now, that wasn't presented in that room at that time to say, well, look, you know, here's what this shows, I mean, so help me understand why we need a fifth courtroom. So, you know, based off new evidence, as we would say in a trial, based off new evidence, this is kind of where I'm at. And so, listen, he, that's where he's at on it. You know, he felt like it needed to be a courtroom. Two of us felt like this was the best option to put 91, or put the coroner and public defender there. And Charlie said, hey, I want to give this two week time to see if any more evidence, so to speak, comes forward where I can, you know, give everybody an opportunity. And I'm fine with that. So we're going to have a meeting next week. By the time this comes out, it'll be either right at or right after, and we'll see where we're at. If, and I'll report back because it's going to be on the agenda, and we'll report back on it. But that's where I'm at on it, bottom line. I just feel like we need to get out of the rental business, and we don't need to spend money if it's not something that feels vital and needed because we've got unused time. And maybe it's something where we look at, the courts can look at schedules, you know? There's all kind of inventive ways, if we've got all these extra hours of unused courtroom time, maybe we need to find a way to schedule things a little differently or do things differently to optimize it. Because if we were pushing 85, 90% of the time where we're booked with hours in a courtroom, absolutely, I would be like, yeah, hey, we, we need another space. We don't want folks sitting in jail any longer than they have to be. But I can assure you, folks aren't in jail right now because we don't have a fifth courtroom because they can't be heard. That is not the case. I'm all about everybody getting their, their fair and speedy trial, all about that. I would never want, because that just shifts the problem somewhere else, right? If we didn't have a fifth courtroom and we're holding up the judicial system, now the jails are full. And now we got to go put a jail expansion on. And then the one last piece to this, taxes, is if we build a fifth courtroom, we've now got to have an officer in that fifth courtroom, which means what? The sheriff's going to say, I need more in my budget to staff that fifth courtroom. And I get that, you're right. So not just spending the money upfront to build a fifth courtroom when court's going on and, you know, we've got to have more officers there. So now I've got to give more money out of a budget to the Sheriff's Department. We're not trying to increase our budget. We're trying to hold the line or decrease the budget. That's your tax dollars, my tax dollars at work. And that, there's a whole lot of things that kind of come into play on this. So that's, I'm, I'm done with that. That's kind of where we're at. So courtroom drama, right? So to be continued. So the next item up was CTI engineering. So Boynton Road and Three Notch Road. I travel this road to church every Sunday. So I go down there, I come and go twice a week, right? On my way there and on my way home. It's a busy intersection. Anybody that lives over that way knows it's a busy intersection. The problem we've had there too, if you go over there right now, there's a metal plate over the road on Three Notch as you cross over Boynton going out of town. And that tile underneath the road has got to be replaced. It's failing. And so we're looking at that intersection twofold here. One is, we're looking at it as, we've got to tear that intersection out. There's no way to do that and not just close the road down. Now, what kind of disruption is that for folks that live out that way? It's a huge disruption. Two is, we've just got a traffic congestion problem here. So the solution, and this is the first piece of the solution, this is the engineering we approved to do a traffic circle study. So we had CTI, and it's a roundabout, traffic circle. Listen, let's just call it a roundabout. One of the best roundabout examples I can give you is at the end of Graysville Road and Highway 41. So living over here, anytime you went down Graysville Road, trying to get off of Graysville onto Highway 41 was difficult at best. Especially when school let out every day and people, you know, folks were coming to get their kids from school. And so it was hard. So we put a roundabout there, and it did two things there. One, it decreased a lot of speed through there, so it's public safety. But two, more importantly, is it kept the traffic congestion. It kept the flow off of Graysville onto 41. And so the same idea comes here. What can we do to get the flow from Boynton and Three Notch to where there's not backups, it's a four-way stop right now, and keep the traffic moving more efficiently through there? That was the first thing. Second thing is, is this takes care of the second piece, which is putting a roundabout there. So now we won't have to close that road. So you're like, well, how in the world can we do that and not close the road? Well, I'm going to jump down an agenda item or two, and the property at 1999, Three Notch Road. So when you get to that intersection, there's a brick house that sits over there. The county has now bought that home. So two things on that. One, we needed that because that's where we're going to build the roundabout, part of it, right? So we needed to have a wider space there to build this roundabout. And then we could do that in such a way where when we complete that, we can come back and remove where that tile is failing and fix that without ever closing the road. So for you folks who are frantically on Q Public right now, looking to see what we paid versus what the property owner paid for the property, I'll save you the trouble. Property owner bought that property back on December 17th, 2021. It's an LLC for $350,000. We did a appraisal on it. The appraisal came back at $365,000. So what did the county pay for the property? We paid $350,000. We paid exactly what the previous owner paid. We didn't pay a penny more. I know a lot of times, there's some conspiracy theorists out there that, and it has happened. I'm not going to say it hasn't, where property is bought by the county and we find out that we paid a significant amount more than what the previous owner paid. And then people try to link somebody on the commission with the property owner, right? I get it. This isn't that time. Save you the trouble. We paid what they paid. They bought it years back. They bought it with the intention of a few different things that never panned out. They bought it as an investment, and it just didn't work out for what they thought they could use it for. So they were willing to sell it. It was already up for sale. We didn't approach them for something that was off market. It was for sale. We saw an opportunity to fix a problem without being a huge congestion issue or closing a road and of alleviating a traffic problem there at a four-way intersection that's highly busy. So it's a win-win for the county. And these are the kind of solutions that we need in our county. There's a lot of major intersections that we're going to address in areas of track, traffic congestion that need solutions. So that was the next item. It's twofold, you know, we had to appraise the property to make sure, we can never buy something more than its appraised value. You know, we, we can't say, hey, we need it so bad, we'll pay over what it's worth. We can't do that. As a government entity, we're not allowed to do that. And that's prevent you, the taxpayer, from paying too much. So that's twofold. That'll be coming down the line. Obviously, it'll take a while, but these are the first steps to that. the next one on there, and two last pieces to the meeting, and these were easy ones. The first one is, we finally got an easement from Lake Winnipesoaca to get sewer to Waverly Park subdivision that sits behind Lake Winnipesoaca. So Waverly Park subdivision's been there for decades upon decades upon decades. And they're all on septic tank systems. And a lot of them are failing. And so one of the things that was promised to these folks in previous SPOLOST referendums is we would get you sewer. Now, see, I'm all about putting sewer in these types of areas. You know, instead of us focusing on putting sewers in undeveloped areas and then having a ton of growth come out there, we need to take care of the taxpayers that have been paying taxes for years that need sewer. And so we've been trying and thank you, Lake Winnipesoaca, for giving us this easement so we can have these 200-plus homes in Waverly Park now get sewer access. And so the project's going to be able to go forward, and it'll take some years, obviously, to get this implemented and in. And then folks, as they need to, can tap into the sewer system that want to get off a septic system. So that was the next thing that happened at the meeting, and that's a big win for the county, a big win for the taxpayers and the citizens that need sewer. So thank you for all involved. Chad, Chad Young and his office for, you know, getting this over the, over the hump here and done. The next resolution that came along, which was the last thing we'll talk about. So this was a great thing to end the meeting on. After 42 years of service, Detective Sergeant Mike Tinker is retiring from duty from the Katusa County Sheriff's Department, March 21st, 2025. And so as a token and appreciation and commendation for his years of faithful and dedicated service, the sheriff requested that Detective Tinker be given his weapon at the time of his retirement. The action requires a board of approval from the commissioners through a resolution to declare the service weapon as surplus property. A similar action was taken by the Board of Commissioners at the time a former sheriff, Phil Summers, retired after his many years of faithful service. So Detective Tinker obviously has sentimental value with his firearm. It's a Glock. And so we, the sheriff, his department, wanted to be able to let him have that service weapon for 42 years of service. I don't, you, you're not going to meet many folks, especially nowadays, that stayed at a job for 42 years. Because that just doesn't happen that much. And to have somebody that did it in service of all of us in this county and to keep us safe for 42 years. Sergeant Mike Tinker, thank you. Thank you. Your dedication to the community is just, and, you know, it's just unheard of nowadays. And so thank you. So it was an honor for us as a commission to say, yeah, we'll, we'll declare that surplus property and unusable, and he can have his weapon. Because that's the least we can do for all the years of service that Detective Tinker put into us for Katusa County. So it was a great way to end the meeting. It was a great turnout from all of his fellow officers to send him off. And, you know, we started with firefighters and we ended with Detective Tinker. So good things happened in the meeting, both these meetings, a lot of good things there. But at the end of the day, you know, there's some hard decisions that come along the way too. And that's what I said as being a commissioner, there's going to be easy decisions like this with Officer Tinker. There's going to be tough decisions like with the courthouse. And we're not all going to see eye to eye. But the one thing I can always promise you is I'm going to do my due diligence. I'm going to do my work, and I'm going to do what I think's best for you, the taxpayer. You know, I, I don't take this job lightly. I appreciate the position I'm in. I try to put the time and the effort and the energy in that it deserves, you know? put the time and the effort and the energy in that it deserves, you know. I go to city council meetings here in Ringgold, because we've got issues and things that they need to address and need help with, and that's my job as District 3 Commissioner, try to attend all the planning and zoning meetings, because I, I want to see how the sausage is made, so to speak. I mean, I want to see a zoning case start, I want to see folks that come speak for and against a zoning case, and I want to hear what the board has to say, the zoning board. I think it's important, you know, and then it gives them access to me as your commissioner, I'm supposed to be accessible, you know, I don't need to hide behind a desk. I try to come out after every meeting, when the meeting adjourns, before we go to executive session and talk to everybody in the audience. I think that's important as well. I, I think, you know, I'm just you, I'm one of, I'm just a person just like you guys. I was just a taxpaying citizen a year and a half ago now that had no clue you'd ever run for office, but I just felt like it was time to put my effort and energy into the community, thank you for letting me do that, and I'll be back, and we'll have it back to where it's one per episode, so we can really dive in a little bit more, not have these as long as they are. So thank you for watching. Until next time, have a great week, and thank you for all you do in the county as well.